Okay. Morning Lynn.
Morning.
How are you?
Good.
Good. Okay, would you want me to flag salute please?
Flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which stands one nation and our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning everyone. Commissioner Beth.
I remember that we approved the minutes from January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty.
I second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Announcing Commissioner Beth will not be here today. Uh, Mr. Bailey, you're up.
Alright. Got a different permit I need to see about getting signed today. I got this yesterday afternoon. It's for our compost facility permit. This here is saying that we will follow our solid waste plan. So I need the chairman to sign off on this. So we can move forward.
Good.
Should have everything, need sign on the X's.
Right there.
You have two spots, one above and one below.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we move forward with this permit for our composting facility certification at the Bourbon County Transfer Station compost pad as outlined in KSA sixty-five dash three-four-zero-seven, allowing Public Works Department to continue with a compost facility. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Good job Eric, thank you. Been a long time getting there, wouldn't you?
Well, we're still jumping through hoops. We're not, we're not quite there. Not there yet, but we're, we will get there.
But you're carrying paperwork at the start.
That's, that's, um, yeah. It's, uh, definitely changed from the day that we met with everybody out there. So it's been a lot more hoops we've had to jump through to...
Yeah.
To get where we need to be, but we will get there. Okay. The local road safety plan grant that we had last, or accepted last year, or awarded last year, was contacted last week. They're, to the point they're ready to start with the, uh, looking at our roads and what have you. Have a conference call with them tomorrow. It's a kickoff conference call at one o'clock. Wanted to give you kind of a heads up. I will go ahead and kind of hand out the roads that they'll be looking at so that way everybody knows.
Now, these are roads you and they will be inspecting, driving, or this?
This is roads that they will be inspecting.
Okay.
And giving us a, some suggestions on what we can do to make our roads safer.
No, this is similar, this is a similar kind of grant to, uh, Barb Gup for the, what's the Salvarn?
No, this is a different, this is a different grant.
Okay.
And then also after they do that, this will make us eligible for more grants.
Good. That's great.
Based off of this study, so it's a win-win for us.
Good.
But again, the kickoff meeting will be tomorrow and then we'll have one each, each month will be another conference call, so.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Birch Road, east of Highway three, just kind of give you an update on that. Ditches are filled in, compacted. Now we're raising the, the road, the east part of the road about a foot and a half, two foot, somewhere give or take in different areas, build it up. So we can catch drainage coming down the hill, so it doesn't go all the way down the hill and it rode the ditches out. Anyhow, we're working on that this week. And everything, we're, we're back healthy, so we're kind of able to, to do a few more projects. We did shut down last week and hauled gravel from the windmill over there where they had their, concrete plant, their batch plant, they offered us some excess gravel over there, so shut the trucks down and, and hauled gravel last week, so just let you know that. CND landfill has been capped on top per KDHE guidelines. That's our, I believe quarterly, or, so anyhow, that is, that is completed. We are on schedule with that, so just wanted to give you a heads up on that. We did find a culvert, a forty-eight inch culvert on two-eighteenth, just south of Native, that the whole bottom is completely rusted out. That's a pretty highly traveled road. And when I say the whole bottom, I should say the east bottom of the, the culvert. That's one of the routes that the trucks take to get to the landfill.
Is that the blacktop around the curve?
Yep, right as you come around the curve, it's just back to the south of two-eighteenth and Native. So where the, uh, I call it KOA campground, well, I don't remember the name of it. But anyhow, where the campground is, it's just east a bit there and then north of the curve. But there's a big forty-eight inch tube and we're gonna have to do something with it.
Metal or concrete?
It's metal. Had a company come in and look at lining it, so maybe we wouldn't have to dig up the, the road. They, they sent me back a price of ninety-four hundred dollars to, to line that. I thought, might be a little steep, not sure. So anyhow, my bridge and culvert, or not, my culvert crew is putting together some ideas that maybe we can do it internally and, uh, try and do it ourselves and see what we can come up with, with the existing tubes we have. But try and keep from digging up the road is our, our goal, see if we can't...
Be nice not to have to.
Yeah, because I'm just asphalted and here a couple of years ago and it's, you know, a nice road and a lot of traffic, so.
Might be hard to encase another one inside there.
I, that's...
You might not have the room either. Water capacity, do you have the room, or?
I think we can make it happen. It's gonna probably be a forty-two instead of a forty-eight, but if it's...
Do something around the flowable fill or something?
Then we'll, yes, we'll put a flowable fill and, and slide it back in. And with it being smooth walled inside, I believe we'll get the, the flow that we need through there compared to the corrugated, um, metal. So that's kind of what we're looking at and, uh, I wanted to give you a heads up on it, so that way you know what's going on.
Yeah, good.
Okay?
Good.
Windmill project, just a couple items here. We're still working on the post-road inspection. Supposed to meet with them, uh, this week, kind of give them a little bit of a punch list on some items and what have you. It'll be a continual till we get everything back to how we want it. Also a reminder, and we want everyone to hear this, they are not completely leaving, they are pulling the trailers out in the next week or two there at the lay-down yard where we had, saw all the trailers and all of the equipment. They'll still have employees here. They're working out of the yard over on, uh, Calvary, so just wanted to give everybody a heads up. We will be seeing the trailers pull out, we will be seeing equipment moving out, but they are still in the area. Jeff Spangler is still here, he's kind of our contact, but want to make sure, because it is, it's gonna look different out there when they pull all those trailers and, and everything like that, so. Anyhow, wanted to give a heads up on that, and then I told you about the excess rock and what have you that they were kind enough to offer to us, so. Anything for me?
Did you figure out what that one email meant for us, the road?
Yes, I actually went down and visited with the citizen and, uh, there is some areas that we need to add some gravel on a curver.
Shoulders.
Yeah, yep, so.
You know, a couple of years ago, some of these hills that we have around, or areas where the rocks are up.
Mm-hmm.
We took, uh, the, the stuff out of Shepherd Quarry, which had some clay in it, and put it on the hills. Worked well.
Right.
Worked really good.
Right.
You know, they're starting to come through again, but, uh, not near as much, just basically where we hadn't put that clay on.
Right.
Is where I'm noticing the rocks, but it did work out.
Okay. My ideal goal there would be to have a jackhammer on either skid steer or the mini and pop them rocks, get them out of there, then get some gravel on that.
They may be attached.
Well, that could be, but if we could get them down a little bit, because I think they're gonna continue just to keep showing up.
Will it go eight foot deep?
We'll see.
I know, it's a good idea, it's worth trying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Plus you build the road up a little bit, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Well, good.
Yep. Anything else?
No, I don't have anything. Thank you on the compost permit. Hey, you guys doing a good job out there, so tell them thank you.
I'll do that, so.
Okay. Moving right along, approval of Township and Cemetery Board's annual report.
We are going to hold off on that, and we're gonna do that next week.
Take it off the agenda, okay? Can we just take it off? Justin, do we have to make a motion, take it off?
No.
Okay. All right, well, moving right along. Discussion to a meeting at Medical Building on January thirty-first, twenty-two.
Commissioners, we're gonna need a special setting for Monday, January thirty-first at nine AM here at the commission room. And then you'll need to make a vote if everything goes as planned to, um, I'll be allowed to attend any announcement or any festivities that could occur at the hospital on that same day. But you'll need a special setting for about thirty-first.
Okay.
So we'll move the meeting, our meeting to the thirty-first?
It makes sense to kind of, I don't know what the agenda looks like for next Tuesday, but we could get a lot done, maybe that Monday morning and then, because you're gonna need, all I need you for probably twenty minutes, thirty at the most.
All Monday morning, have a meeting Tuesday.
Because I don't think the next, if there is gonna be something, it won't happen till eleven.
We don't have to be out there till eleven.
Right.
We got a lot of time, so let's just have a meeting Monday. What do you think Lynn?
I'm up for it.
I am too. Hair motion?
I'm, I'm over here, moving my, excuse me, meeting to Monday morning at nine o'clock.
I second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
I got members to be here. Discussion of Kansas Association of Counties Meeting in the fall. Here we go. I wonder who was gonna be there.
That's labeled wrong on the, the agenda. Um, it's actually our southeast Kansas regional meeting, and I guess we host it this year. Laura let me know that, and so we need to think about a date and start planning for that. I don't know, every four years maybe that we get that, so, um...
Well, it goes alphabetical order for counties we're used to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, if you want me to try and put together a committee, um, to start working on that, you just let me know.
Have you been to one of them yet?
No, but I've been to something similar, so. Yeah, yeah. And I don't know...
Your team?
Yeah, um, yeah, I've got some ideas rolling around in my head, so.
Years ago, we had it at the college, and we got some vendors to buy lunch.
Yep.
I was one of the vendors, a long time ago, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I would appreciate if you would take charge of that.
Okay, all right, I'll work with Laura, because she seems to know quite a bit about it and then get with some of the, we'll bring it up in our department head meeting too, at the next, next round, so that's what that's about.
Thank you. County councilor, we're moving fast this morning.
I just have, uh, one thing for sure, and then the other thing, I have to get permission, I guess, to let everyone know that I'll be meeting with Mr. Harris this week, probably Friday, to go over some contracts to review, so that we kind of have a heads up for those in the future. I have a seventeen pager and then a couple of lease assignments that we need to go over, so hopefully Friday or even Saturday morning, I don't care, whatever we need to do to go over those, I'll need about an hour of your time.
Anyway, Thursday would work?
Thursday could work.
Okay.
Let me, I'll check my calendar and, yeah, yeah, we can get that done.
I'm supposed to be in Nashville Friday.
Sure, okay, yeah, we can do that.
I can move it.
No, that's all right, we can do that. The other thing too is I've got the, um, landfill, I don't know what it's called, like a real estate contract, almost done. I had a couple of questions this morning, we're following up on a survey that could have possibly be done. I'm hoping to have that on the next agenda or the first full agenda in February, so hopefully we'll have that disseminated to the city, so they can take a look at it too prior to signing, but I'm still working on the rough draft. We're looking on, we think there was a survey done, but we're not a hundred percent sure, and that survey could have been done years ago, but we might have to get an updated survey, and if that's the case, it could delay the project a little bit.
Okay.
Or the transfer.
Anything else?
That's it. Moving on, I mean, we're still moving on the, I'm gonna go get some more information on the two thousand seventeen, or two thousand sixteen back sales tax stuff today, and we'll have the next round filed hopefully by the end of this week or first part of next week.
Thank you.
Yep.
Susan Van Croull, Finance Director, comment?
I, I need an executive session, um, to discuss personal matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect their privacy. Um, and I would like Ashley and Courtney to be in that executive session, and Justin.
For what reason?
Uh, job performance, yeah, yep.
Go ahead Lynn.
And duties, job performance and duties.
When we go into second session for how long?
Uh, let's do ten minutes.
Ten minutes over KSA seventy-five dash four-three-ninety, V one, discuss personnel matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect their privacy, uh, job performance.
Ten minutes?
Ten minutes, it'll be turned at nine, uh, twenty-eight.
And Justin, Courtney, Ashley, and the two commissioners, and Susan. I second that. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. I'm gonna cough all over again. I will cough all over you, go ahead. All right. We're down to the public comment section. Anyone? I'm sorry, we gotta go, yeah, we gotta kinda come out of executive session.
We come out of section at nine-twenty-eight.
I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, no action? Down in public comment section, please. No, no one? All right, moving right along. Elected official comment, please. Bill?
Nothing.
Nothing? Wow. Okay. Commission comment. Lynn, anything?
I don't have anything at all. Not that I'm aware of. I, uh, yeah. I noticed, uh, they are getting some gravel on the roads.
Yep, getting some gravel on the roads, uh.
But also maybe it's just dry this winter.
Very fortunate that this time of year, 'cause if it'd been wet, we might have been in trouble.
I think you're right.
Well, I know it would have, because.
Those washed spots that we've been fighting for the last couple of years?
Yeah.
Are, are starting to show.
Yeah. Yeah, it's starting to show. And, uh, again, if it had been a wet season, we'd, we'd had some problems probably, but luckily for us, we haven't, so.
Yes, my thought is, what do you think about putting that clay and gravel on those hills where the rocks are coming out?
It worked.
You've been through that before?
We, we did it up on Reader Hill and it worked fine. In several places we put it and compacted me. You either go take the rock down or bring the road up and, and Eric's gonna try to take the rock down, but that rock's probably thirty foot deep, so.
Anything that kind of.
It's gonna come back.
Just, just casual, there's no observation.
Yeah.
Is, or roads are going down. Rocks are now coming out.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. Well, I.
Been helping you something, but it's a long process.
Yeah. Well, I liked that material we got out of Shepherd Quarry, parts of clay and the gravel in certain areas. It done wonders for compacting the road and bringing it up, stepping it up. That's what we're looking for to do. So, I do like that ideal, uh, certainly up to Eric how he addresses it, but I think that clay has its place on all roads. It did in the past and it will in the future. So, but I, I know he's chasing the gravel now because, uh, or Public Works had an extended asphalt season, which was a good thing. Not saying it's a bad thing, but they got a lot of work done. But, but doing that, wasn't a lot of gravel being moved. And if it stays dry, we're gonna be okay. And he's, he's playing catch-up now, so.
Certainly is.
Yeah.
It's, it's, since he's been a great job of, of doing it, of course, asphalt season probably gonna be extended again because they're bringing in more revenue.
Yeah.
Once the Senate acts.
Yeah.
And we're trying to put more asphalt in the road.
Yeah.
And I did this morning address some of that, uh, already a spot that, that we're gonna go into our planning session.
Yeah.
Here for a long, on the asphalt roads.
Yeah.
And, uh, one thing about the asphalt roads is, is they ask me, how do we determine? And I said, well, condition of the road and amount of traffic. And then like we have roads that we need to dress.
Right.
To save on it.
Right, right.
Try to go back and dig them all up straight here.
And you're right, that's something during our work session is coming up quickly. I think Eric wants to have one. As we're working on our asphalt program for this year, we as a group have to decide how Eric, and maybe he can come up some pretty good plan. While we're laying asphalt, we've still gotta move gravel. I mean, we, 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 we just have to, or wet weather gets you in trouble. So, and maybe he has a plan. He mentioned another, replacing that one dump truck, and it'd be a replacement, so. Maybe he's got some ideals. I know we still have one belly dump, so.
I know, I know, we, we had a good session too.
Yeah.
If you could get twenty-five ton on, on a belly dump.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Well, we moved a lot of gravel, those two belly dumps, while the asphalt team is overlaying, so, but that's up to Eric, I, he, what direction he wants to go, but I, I do think that, uh, hopefully this year, with a little bit of luck with keeping trucks going, not breaking down, he has the ability to.
Problem.
Maybe he'll have a, a chance to do both, but certainly need a, while we're asphalt crew going, we need a gravel crew going. And it, we got a lot of gravel roads, and like you said, they're going down. That's 'cause the traffic's beating them down. That's normal. But we have a lot of opportunities. And during our plant, planning session, I think we can address a lot of things, so.
Well, I know just casual observation, living in the country, I see a lot more bull racks on these roads and diesel trucks with big grain.
Yeah. Yeah.
On them, and you know, that's, that's on feature roads.
Yeah. Yeah, grain trucks are getting larger, but that's good for the farmers.
You bet.
Making more money. But, uh, but we'll have our work session, I, I hope he goes for it in February. And we can really discuss with Eric, Public Works Director, his plans on addressing the gravel and asphalt at the same time. But you gotta do a little bit of both, so.
So I'm very pleased with what he did last year.
Yeah.
He even hit, or no, or he hit fourteen miles. That's, that's two and a half acres. That's good.
That's really good. Uh, the, the one thing that I saw last year, no reflection on the past commissioners, this commission let Eric lay the thickness that he chose to, to build a better road. When I was the director, not a bad thing. We had commissioners tell me how much I was going to lay, not having any bearing on the condition of the road, but you lay it thinner, you go farther, so.
You know, we put in the, we put in that stretch from Ninety-Fifth West.
Mm-hmm.
Maple Road.
Mm-hmm.
It's held up well. That's been, that's been, that's been seven years ago.
Some application does work, but I know where the other one, we just laid an inch and just get four or five bad spots. But you're right, West on Maple worked perfect.
Well, and we got a different lay-down sheet.
Yeah.
Now than we had before.
Yeah.
The thing that you were using before was best guess.
Yeah.
Anyway, I'm excited about scoring into the planning session this year.
I am too. I do have one thing. We have a, uh, person that resigned from the Southeast Kansas Library Assistant Board. They wanted me to announce that today. If anyone is interested in being on the library board, please contact that director. We have to appoint it, okay. I guess we have to appoint that person, so anyone in, interested in being on the Kansas Library Assistant Board, let us know, send us a letter or card or something, and we'll go from there.
Where's Rob's got anything?
Rob? Yeah, he was a while ago. Is, is Rob still here?
Yeah.
Morning.
Morning.
We're, we're kinda moving ahead of time. We'd like to hear from you.
Oh, about what?
Anything, see how you are. We haven't heard from you.
I didn't know I was on the agenda.
The clock.
Oh.
Your, your, your mission request.
Huh? Commission request, okay, so.
We like visiting with you.
Oh, you just wanna visit with me?
Yeah, see how things are going.
Oh, things are going well. We're busy. Um, we're moving forward with a couple of projects. Uh, we've got some great things coming up, um, uh, in the near future, so, uh, you know, Monday, we got a, a big day Monday, um, next week. And then, um, after that, we'll, we'll move on to the next thing, but, uh, things are good. Things are really good, so.
Good.
How are you guys?
Couldn't be better.
There you go. That's good to hear. Caught me off guard. I didn't know I was gonna come up here and talk.
I understand, so.
They're like, are you Rob? I said, yeah, today I am.
Yeah, thank you, Rob. Matt? Anything? I don't know the young lady, but. Would like to, you got anything you wanna address? Maybe we're really running ahead of schedule here, but had a short agenda. Okay. I second it. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Wow.
Is the meeting over?
Yep.
I'll talk to the chairman then. Here?